Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 9, 2021. As a preliminary matter, I must read this script. This is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond with affirmative. Ron Brooks.
Here.
Nicholas Lynch.
Here.
Steve Chambers. Todd Karain.
Here.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond with affirmative. The only one that's here is a little town planner, Adam Menard.
Yeah.
And Rachel Pressing.
Yes.
The open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board, Tuesday, March 9, 2021, without call orders at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only. Although some members of the Planning Board are physically located in the Selectmen's Meeting Room in Town Hall, those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. Or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/133747477. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to share your screen. Anything you broadcast may be captured in the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. For the first item on our agenda, applicant SZLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a 13-lot, single-family home development of property located at 178 Hampton Street and 19 Eaton Ave., MAP 12, parcel 120. This has been continued from 2/23/2021. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, this is Donald O'Neill. I'm a lawyer from Worcester with an office on Hampton Street. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant. Also, I believe Joe Graham, who is the engineer of the project, and Bob O'Neill, who is the surveyor, I believe are also present as well, either by computer or by the phone. My internet connection is not so good, so I am on the phone. But I believe that both of them are also, I was anticipating that they would be joining us this evening for this meeting. Mr. Graham had submitted some revised plan and also had some responses, I guess, to the issues that have been raised by Graves Engineering, which have been submitted. We have not received a response back from Graves yet in terms of their review of the revisions, but I did speak with the planner, and he thought that it might be appropriate to give the Board any comments on the material that had been submitted, even though, yeah, as I say, we're waiting for Graves' review. But specifically, if Mr. Graham is on the phone and go over briefly the scope of his revisions, I'd ask him to join in at this point and do that.
We're not going to go through this line by line, answer by answer. That's up to Graves to go through. All the members on the Board have read it, and we're just waiting to see that your responses qualify for acceptance through Graves. But I'm sure people have-
Okay.
Does the applicant have anything else to present?
I know. I mean, I had expected that you would want to wait for Graves, but we just were going to make ourselves available if you had, you know, questions for us. If not, then I think we'll wait for the review and, you know, deal with whatever the review comes back with, you know, at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I mean, I know I have some questions, and I'm going to go through each member of the Board to see if they have any questions on the plans. Does anyone on the Board have a question for him? I'll start at the top. Nick, do you have any questions on the plans?
Not at this time, John.
Ron Brooks?
Yes, John. The, this was a 13-lot subdivision, and it is now only maples?
I believe the, there are a number of A&R lots that are shown on the plan that have frontage on existing public ways, so I, and I believe that's three lots. So that would be 10 lots to be subdivided, and then the three A&R lots. And as proposed, you know, there were some utility connections and so forth through those lots, through the subdivisions, so they're all still on the same plan, but three of them are A&R lots.
All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Todd, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I have a couple of questions that centered around sheet number five on the plans. The first one is, notice that you have standard specifications for handicap ramps, but they're not shown on the plan. I just want to confirm that you are going to be installing the handicap ramps where the sidewalk meets Eaton Ave., is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's the requirement, that of course we would be doing that. And I don't know whether the, again, whether the engineer is there, if he wants to jump in or not, but that would be the intent.
Anything else, Todd?
Yep, I didn't know we were waiting for the engineer or not. The other comment or question I have is, on sheet five, you show 13 proposed Norway maples. I believe Norway maples are on the prohibited plant list in the Commonwealth as an invasive species, and you cannot propagate new ones or plant new ones. So you're going to, you should probably want to check into that. You may have to revise those plans appropriately.
Sure, thank you. And I think they're probably, they're not Asian longhorn beet old resistant either, so, you know, that's something we will certainly look at and come up with an acceptable tree species.
The last question I have, and forgive me if this has already been addressed at a previous meeting, and your engineer or maybe Adam might know this. Has the fire department signed off on this roadway design, particularly the circle area? Are their apparatuses able to turn around here, or are they expected to back out on Eaton Ave. as they're exiting the location if they're responding for an emergency?
Through the Chair, I can try to answer that. The fire department did receive a copy of the initial submittal. I would have to go back to the files to see if they had any comments. I can double-check with them to make sure that the roadway is, they can turn around on that. They have turning tuckles that they can use to make sure that it'll work well.
Okay. I also know that I would expect that the engineers for the development also could do an auto-turn analysis as well to provide, you know, sort of help the fire department do their analysis if they want.
Yes, and I don't recollect, or as Adam had mentioned, I don't board any comments from the fire department, and, you know, that would be something which we could have provided, and I believe it would already designed to provide for a turnaround in the radius.
Okay, so if we can just get confirmation on that before the next meeting or next time this is up, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, very good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do we know what the radius of the cul-de-sac is?
If the, I think I might be by myself here, but I don't know whether either Bob O'Neill or Joe Graham are on the line, if they could jump in to answer that question, it'd be helpful.
Hi, John, this is Vaughn. It's 100-foot diagonal, 50-foot radius. Joe Graham just texted, he's having trouble calling in, so he's trying to call now. But it, to the fire department's, it would accommodate the turning radius for a ladder. I can let Graham back.
Yeah, it would accommodate a turning radius for a ladder if there's nobody parked on the street.
Well, I think that's, well, we can certainly look at it. I would just would say the fire department had received it. I would assume that if they had an issue with it, they would have told us. We could certainly look at it again.
We'll confirm that with-
But that's the, not many people park on cul-de-sacs, I don't think, in terms of the parking space. But that, again, if you have an opportunity and don't feel it's adequate, to let us know, and we'll take a look at that.
Todd, did you have anything else?
I know, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions myself. Let me find my sheet. On sheet six, the grading plan, my first question is, what's protecting the back of the house from being flooded? The slope goes right into it. There's no mound, there's no diversion around the home, so it can get to the street and get to the drainage on any of them. Except these are the first two.
Again, is, I think, if that's a question for Mr. Graham, I think they just said he's having trouble making a connection to get through. And, you know, if he, if he's, I would defer to him in terms of answering that, but again, if he's not able to get through, that would certainly be something which, you know, we're going to be back before you once we have the comments from Graves, too, and I can add that to the list to make sure that he addresses that or has a response for the question.
Yeah, because most of my questions are engineering questions. Well, I'll say them anyway, just so they run the meeting minutes anyway.
Sure.
Hi, Don, this is Joe. I actually was able to restart right here and actually log in, so I'm here.
So I don't know if you heard the question.
I didn't, I just came in at the end of Don's response.
Okay, my question is, that on the Hampton Street side of the development, the contour lines run parallel with the backs of the houses except for the first two. What is protecting those houses from the water running right in them? There's no mound, so-
Um, those, correct. So those areas, the foundation is stepped there, obviously you can see, but you're right. It is graded, just the site is graded in general, from that retaining wall from the top straight down to about, you know, the front of the house area. We can adjust the gradings. The goal was to minimize the height of that retaining wall in the back to about a four-foot wall. Any additional grading that we'll have to do will obviously increase the height of that wall, but that is something, that is something that we can, you know, make that adjustment. And unfortunately, it would just add to the height of that retaining wall up on the top. You can see in the southern end of the project on the Hampton Street side.
I don't have a cut, and you have to look at sheet Z, profile anywhere. My other question would be, even if you do mound that, your grade or your contour line up near the wall is 614. At the roadway, it's 582. That's 32, that's 32 feet.
Yes, from the roadway to the subdivision roadway, not Hampton Street, yes.
No, from Hampton Street down to Road A, the subdivision roadway, right? It's a 32-foot drop between these houses. So how do we slow the water down coming down that hill? I mean, that's just going to just cascade between the homes, and we've had this problem before in town, that's why I'm asking this question. That people have problems with basements flooding, washouts, you name it. So I really want to prevent that from happening again. Is there any way you can tier the back of that so it doesn't come down as fast, or put trench drains behind the holes, or?
We could tier that. Originally, we had, along the road, we had a swell on that uphill side that ran the length of the roadway, but through the comment revisions, we were requested to remove that swell. The swell was in part due because of that runoff. We didn't want to wash out the road. We didn't want to do those kind of things, but it was requested that we remove that. But yes, in addition to that, on the site lot, the grading is extremely steep, like you said, is a 30, you know, 32 and change, kind of a difference between Hampton Street. And the goal was to minimize the amount of retaining walls needed and try to take up that grade in stepping the footing. But if additional walls are needed in order to ease that grade, and it is really, really steep in order to give people, you know, somewhat of a usable backyard, we can add, obviously, tier those retaining walls and add another row.
My other question is, on the opposite side of the Development Street toward the downhill side, the grading that's been there has steepened the slope by two to three feet. I don't know what's that going to prevent that from running into the neighbor's yard faster, because you can't allow more water running into the neighbor's yard than it was originally there before you started work. So I see a little drainage swell there. I'm not sure how deep it is by your, by your profile shot. It's not very deep. I don't know if that's going to-
No, it's approximately, yeah, four feet deep.
You know, from the back of the house, it's 574 to 542 before the swell. That's 32 feet. That's another huge drop.
Correct. Those are, those are the tough areas, the pinch points on this subdivision is between that and that adjacent house, or that adjacent lot. The goal is to minimize any runoff in that area with the use of that swell. We could look at increasing the swell if that's, you know.
Well, the rate of slope coming down from the Hampton Street to the road, the road to that swell, you're going to need to build a retaining wall. That's going to splash right up. That's fast. Even if you have grass covered, it's going to want to wash it out.
Right.
On page seven, on the utility plan, there was a question by Graves on your last run of drainage into the retention pond. I'm not sure what the distance is there, but it's a 15-foot drop. It doesn't look like that far. Say it's 100 feet, that's 15%. That's quite steep. I mean, if there's any type of silt or anything in that drainage water, at a slope that big, you'll get a separation between the fluid and the solids, and eventually you're going to have humps of dirt in that line. The reason I bring this up is because the town's going to have to manage this down the road, and I really don't want to add any more, put any more on Bill Coyle's plate to manage. Should we just routine? There's nothing really routine here that I see.
Yeah, we were able to adjust that. There is a big drop manhole there, so in the revisions, we were able to adjust that slope of that pipe, but it is a steep slope coming down, especially at that outfall down from that third end into the detention basin, where we have a riprap slope in that area.
Yeah, I didn't see a cut of that on the, I didn't see that on your profile sheet. It just does the main road.
We can, yeah, we can add that. We just provided the roadway coming in, but we can add that, especially because the sewer line runs in that area, too, so I think it would be beneficial to add that as a profile so to see that, because that sewer line, that sewer manhole is a drop right there as well as it makes that bend.
There's no detail on the sewer manhole either, but are they inside drops or outside drops?
They are outside drops.
8-inch, that's usually frowned upon as the inside drops, so they're easier to maintain. And you don't have to pour a big concrete mass on the outside. That's up to the town engineer and Graves, not me. My next question would be on your details on sheet 11, your typical trench detail. You call for select gravel, fill compacted, and I don't know if it's eight or six-inch maximum lift, that should be three-quarter stone around a pipe, not select fill unless it's a water main.
Okay, we'll make that adjustment.
And I'm assuming your sidewalks are bituminous and your wheelchair ramps will be concrete with the-
That is correct, as well as the curving is granite.
Curving around the whole site is granite?
Correct, because of the radii coming in as well as the radii at the bulb, so it's all granite curving as proposed.
And what is your typical profile cut on a sidewalk? I don't really see what the depth of your pavement is anywhere handy. Usually you give a profile shot of how much gravel's under the, whatever surface you're providing, whether it be concrete or asphalt, how much gravel, how thick the concrete or the asphalt would be. I don't see that or any-
I believe that was on sheet 12, if that's accurate, the cross-section.
Steel fence, hydrant, stabilized construction. I don't see one for a sidewalk.
On the top of that sheet, typical cross-section, certain Road A. Unfortunately, there, I call it the detail estimate, concrete sidewalk instead of asphalt. I don't have it, I can put the dimension of the eight inches of dense-grained base underneath that.
On sheet 12?
The sheet that is, yes, on the screen.
I don't have that profile on my plans. I don't have, that sheet does not look like my sheet 12.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it looks, this is Todd, it looks like our sheet 14.
Your sheet 14?
In my packet, it's sheet 14.
Okay. Well, you have the typical section for the basin access, typical section for Road A, typical section for a driveway, and the riprap swell. And that riprap swell, according to this plan, is only showing a foot deep, not four feet. And on the bottom, you have the schematic for the configuration for the infiltration basins and the stormwater manhole. I think we already agreed that there's no dimensions on how thick the surface is of the material being used for the sidewalks. And then back on sheet 12, on your hydrant connection, you call for the stone around the hydrant to be covered with plastic. It should be covered with filter fabric. Plastic will hold the water, won't drain as well.
Okay, we'll make that update.
And then I didn't see a detail on your thrust block anywhere. I see them drawn, I mean, they're drawn in here, but there's no dimensions and no-
Yep, I can update that.
Some was a cubic yard. And on your sewer manhole detail, it shouldn't be red sewer brick to raise the cover 12 inches minimum, that's a maximum. You go higher than 12 inches, it's hard to get in the manhole because the steps are too far apart, though.
Okay, we can make that edit.
And I'm not sure what the town requirement is for your inverts in your sewer manholes. I know you show a half an inch per foot, but some towns like them to the top of the pipe, some like them halfway, like you have them shown. I'm not sure what the town requirement is for that. But I like the main continuity if it's different than what's on here.
I can, I'll run that and I'll let you know that, you know, confirm.
Okay, and then your frame and cover doesn't exist. The bearing foundry no longer exists. Hasn't existed for probably eight years now. So you're going to have to refer to something else, East Jordan, Neenam.
Yeah, I believe that's an old standard detail that I thought was updated to East Jordan Ironworks.
Your typical catch basin with frame, it shows compacted gravel underneath it, that should be, or three-quarter inch crust stone, it should just be three-quarter inch hole. And your sheet 14, the typical driveway section, I'm not sure if all the driveways look like this, because it says the typical driveway section, or just some of the driveways look like this. I don't know. Because this is looking 90 degrees to the driveway, I believe, if I have my section correct.
Yeah, this, all driveways are proposed to be the typical section, you know, because it's crowned.
Okay, and in your riprap swell detail, you call for compacted gravel, eight inches of- in your riprap swell detail, you call for compacted gravel, eight inches of processed gravel. I'm assuming that's compacted. Who, who's gonna check the compaction rates on all this material you're putting in for the roadway? You know, for the sidewalks? Who does the compaction test? Because it should be right around ninety-six percent to be industry standard.
Uh, the contractor installing the roadway, um, would have to, you know, provide Yankee testing, obviously, to come out and verify that their, you know, building is in accordance to the standards.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure somebody was gonna do it. And those, I believe those are the only questions that I have. Or comments. Let me think. Hang on just a second. Yeah, I didn't see the, uh, pipe velocities under general engineering, uh, line forty. It says pipe velocity be provided as part of the revised stormwater plan. The incorrect pipe slope has been adjusted to provide realistic values. I don't know what the slope is. I know what the manholes are. We already just talked about them. And you said there's a drop manhole in there, so the profile, if you add that to the profile to show the difference in slope, that would be great.
Okay, we will know that.
And then, under your hydrology computations, this is, this is, thank you, but the roadside dishes were, roadside ditches were eliminated, not illuminated, from the plan. It's a typo.
All right, I'll, I'll make note of that.
That's all I have. Is any, is there anyone, um, from the public that has a comment on this, uh, subdivision? There being none, is there any more discussion from the representatives for this development? And there being.
Uh, no, just, uh, yeah, just, uh, we'll look forward to coming back to you after we hear back from Graves.
Great. Um, if there's no more questions from anybody on the board, could I have a motion to continue this to, what's the next meeting, Adam?
Uh, March twenty-third.
To March twenty-third?
This is Todd. I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it, Johnny.
All those in favor. Nick?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. We'll see you, gentlemen, in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Um, there's nothing else on the agenda until we get to other business. And discussion of the town meeting warrant, duplicate chapters, Roman numeral after Roman rule, I'm not even gonna try to decipher it, I'm too tired. Section one, purpose of the renumbering, section seven point six. I believe that was supplied in our packet from Adam. And I'll let him take over from here.
Oh, thank you. So, um, I just want to kind of, uh, update the board on town meeting articles. Um, the town, the board might be familiar with these. These were, um, considered last spring. Um, we were gonna bring in the town meeting, um, but because of COVID, we dropped all zoning articles for spring town meeting last year. These, these particular articles are kind of housekeeping articles. The duplicate chapters, um, fourteen through eighteen, um, these, these zoning bylaws all exist in the town bylaws. So, these are, um, extraneous bylaws. Um, the town bylaws are more up to date than the zoning bylaws. So, then this is kind of housekeeping. Like I said, just we want to just take these out of zoning and clean up, clean up the zoning bylaw. Do you have any questions? I'd happen to answer that the, the second one. Section one purpose is updating some of the language in the authority and purpose of the zoning bylaw. And the renumbering is kind of self-explanatory. It's just fixing a couple numbering errors from the signed bylaw from several years ago, whenever that was passed. Uh, the Board of Selectment last night voted to send us to Planning Board for the public hearing and planning on scheduling the public hearing for April thirteenth, so we can, we can, boy can make a decision at that time whether to recommend or not recommend the town meeting members approve the, the zoning change.
Does anybody have any questions? Being none, do you have a thought about the CMR PC mapping assistance open space plan?
Uh, yeah, thank you. The, we're, we're working on updating the town's open space and recreation plan. Um, just the chambers represents the planning board on that committee. Uh, we've been working for the past four months, sort of, to update the plan. Um, there are several, about ten or twelve required maps. The state requires these maps to be in the plan. Um, we really don't have, meaning me, I don't have the technical expertise to create these maps. Um, so, we're looking for authorization from this board to approve, um, eighteen hours of, it's called local technical assistance work through CMR PC. CMR PC gives us hours every year. Um, and we also earn hours by attending various meetings and events. So, we have eighteen hours to use. And CMR PC would like the board to just authorize the expenditure of those hours.
You're bored on that, huh?
Yes.
Um, could I have a motion to approve the eighteen-hour usage for drawing these maps?
John, this is Nick. I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Ronnie, John, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Nicholas?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Uh, next up on the agenda is meeting minutes. Uh, could I have a motion to approve meeting minutes of meeting one twelve, twenty twenty-one, as amended?
I'll make that motion, John.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Uh, Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from one twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, as presented?
I'll make that motion, John.
Thank you, Ron. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Nick?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Uh, do we have any town planner update for the MVP grant, Adam?
Um, yes. We, uh, we completed a flyer, gonna be distributing to, um, these little pond area residents. Those should be going out in the next week or so. Um, we've got a stakeholder meeting coming up, um, and the engineering aspects are plugging along. We're hoping to schedule a community event. Um, we're kind of aiming towards Earth Day, which is late April. Um, we're hoping to do something in person. You know, we're using, utilizing whatever the COVID protocols are at the time. Um, I don't have details yet, but that should be forthcoming. Um, also, there's another grant we received from CMR PC. Uh, a Gotta Park conceptual plan survey, um, that should be going out in the next week. This is a survey about, to try to get ideas of what the public would like the Gotta Park to look like. Trying to, we're revitalizing the area. The tip project is gonna be well underway any day now, the construction of Auburn Street, so we want to try to take the steps to work towards dressing up, um, the park. So, it's kind of an interesting survey. It's an interactive map of some of the possible options that we have to improve it.
Cool.
Um, there's also an open space survey out right now, um, for the open space plan. Um, that's on the town's Facebook page, that's on the town's website, and I believe that was circulated by, uh, one of the open space committee members on the People of Auburn Facebook page. Um, I'm not sure. I assume that went out. I don't have access to that particular one. Um, there's a hundred and thirty respondents so far, so if anybody would like to participate in that survey, that would be greatly appreciated. So, I think that's about all for the updates I have tonight.
Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'd like to address the fact that Wendy has resigned from the planning board, and it's, to me, it's a great loss. I wish her all the luck in the world, but her dedication, her perseverance, and her opinions and knowledge will be greatly missed. I wish her well. May I have a?
I, uh, feel the same way, John.
Thank you. Next meeting is, uh, three twenty-three, twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
John, can I just say this?
Sure.
I think maybe Adam or through us, uh, the planning board, maybe we could send a letter to Wendy thanking her for her service and the fact that we'll, she'll be greatly missed and that type of thing. Maybe Adam could write something up and then.
Absolutely.
Sure, I'll write something up, and if the board wants to, to sign, we can circulate the letter.
Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
Good idea, Ron. Thank you. I appreciate it. May I have a motion to adjourn during the meeting?
I'll make the motion, John.
May I have a second?
I'll second it, John. This is Nick.
Thank you, Nick. All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night.